Welcome to the Carlisle Local School District Board meeting tonight, Monday, August 23rd, 2021. This meeting is a business meeting of the Board of Education and a public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Can I have roll call please, Mr. Bassler?
Mrs. McIntosh?
Here.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Here.
Mr. Jewell?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
And Mrs. Milligan?
Here.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us to our visitors' comment portion of our meeting tonight. Visitors that wish to address the Board are requested to state their name, address, topic, and organization if appropriate, sign in, and comply with the Board policy pertaining to visitors. All meetings of the Board and the Board-appointed committees will be open to the public. In order for the Board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation will be permitted at each meeting. Any person addressing the Board shall state his or her name and address and will be allowed no more than three minutes to speak. During that period, no person may speak twice unless allowed by the Board President or Presiding Officer. All comments should be directed to the Board President or Presiding Officer. I know we have some people who'd like to speak tonight, and I just want to remind, I know there's a lot of talk about masks, we are mask optional. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear about that, but we'd like to have any speakers or visitors' comments.
My name's Josh Singer. Address is 1030 Sherry Lane. To avoid misspeaking or leaving some things out, I wrote down what I wanted to say, so forgive me for reading from my phone. My name is Joshua Singer. I have lived in Carlisle my whole life. My mom, all of my aunts, uncles, a number of cousins have also lived there for their whole lives. I went to school here, played sports here, made so many great memories here in this little village, and now my children are doing the same. Many of you know me and you know my family. I too have known many of you and your families for a long time. I love this village. I love this school system. I'm thankful for this new building we have. This is home. When I was deployed overseas, I couldn't wait to get back here. This is where I want to live, this is where I want to raise my family, and this is where I plan on dying. That said, I have a few issues I'd like to bring up today. First, I want to commend the Board for having the backbone to stand up and vote to reject teaching critical race theory at our school. I know that the school had to pass on some government funding for making that decision, so thank you for not selling out our children to a politically motivated and controversial curriculum. I believe schools should be apolitical and that introducing critical race theory only spreads more division, more hate, more shame, and more guilt which doesn't need to be placed on the shoulders of our children. I hope that this Board will continue to make a stand against any such attempts to burden our children with these matters, so again, thank you. Secondly, masks. At the beginning of last school year, I was very uncomfortable with the idea of sending my kids to school to be masked up all day long. However, I let them make that decision for themselves. I was prepared to do virtual school or even homeschool. Even with my concerns, I let them be under the care of this administration, hoping that all the COVID mandates would soon end. And when they didn't, my frustration grew. I bit my tongue all year, but as school wound down and the mask mandates were lifted, I felt relieved, hopeful that I wouldn't have to put my kids through that situation again. But now the chains are clamping back down even harder than before, and the pressure is on again from Governor DeWine, the media, the CDC, the WHO, and others at the very top of our government. We have seen other schools cave to the pressure and reimpose the mask mandates, causing outrage amongst parents who are sick of it. We are here today to get out ahead of all this madness and to let you know how we feel. As of now, masks are optional at Carlisle, and we thank the Board for that decision. I hope that the school board will keep it that way, even in the face of criticism, even standing in defiance of those officials at the top of our state and local government. These people who have handed down these mandates have been wrong on so many aspects of this whole situation. Their intentions are misguided at best and outright nefarious at worst. For instance, masking students is a pointless endeavor unless you are wearing an N95 mask. You are not protected from the COVID-19 virus. The particles can easily penetrate through all their types of masks, some which even stay on the packaging, that they cannot stop the coronavirus, let alone cloth masks and neck gaiters that go unwashed and are reused. Besides, most of these students and even most teachers are together outside of the school hours unmasked anyways. Parties, sleepovers, church, restaurants, playdates, and so on. I can also never understand the absurdity of watching two boys roll around on a wrestling mat, covered in each other's sweat, breathing heavily face to face, and then afterwards not allowed to shake hands, and then go sit in their socially-distanced chair and be forced to mask up. It is completely illogical. We know where this road will lead if we choose to go down it again. We already see it happening all over the country. It starts with mask mandates, and next it will be vaccine mandates. We are at the point where some people are being coerced into taking vaccines, which up until today were non-FDA-approved. Just today, we discovered that Northridge Schools are bribing children with $100 gift cards to take the vaccine. This is coercion. Now with FDA approval, the green light will be given to begin mandating vaccines anywhere and everywhere, whether people want them or not. At the same time they tell us the vaccine is safe and effective, they also tell us that you can still get COVID, you can still spread COVID, you still need to wear one or even two masks, even if you've been fully vaccinated. And now we're told you need a third booster shot because the first two aren't enough. This is all doublespeak. We went from two weeks to slow the spread to vaccine passports. Two weeks to slow the spread, and unvaccinated and unmasked people are being denied basic human freedoms. They have been inconsistent on nearly everything, if not outright lying to our faces, and our kids are paying the price. We need to be prepared to stand when the pressure gets put on us, because it will come. It will come. We need to know that this Board will stand with us. Our compliance only ensures that the situation will get worse if we do nothing. This school, this community, and this nation will crumble before our eyes while we cower in fear. Our children and grandchildren will be left with nothing, and it will be our failure to stand up together that is to blame. I will not be able to look my children in the eyes, knowing I did not stand and fight for them. But these issues are bigger than just Carlisle. It has to start here with us. We must have the courage, the boldness, and the willpower to stand up and say no more. This is not about a virus anymore. This is about money, power, control, and the evisceration of individual freedom. The only way to end this is for us to stand up individually, like I am right now, inspiring others to stand, and then all of us coming together as a community. The third thing I want to question is quarantines. There's a lot of controversy surrounding COVID testing. This test and the high amount of false positives led to the quarantine of completely healthy students who weren't even sick but were exposed to a COVID-positive student who may or may not have actually had COVID. Quarantines are equally as inconsistent as the masks. Quarantines for unvaccinated students, no quarantines for vaccinated, as long as they have no symptoms. Three feet minimum social distance for masked students, and six feet minimum for unmasked students. It seems like this is the punishment for not complying. Just as masks are recommended by virtually every public health organization, likewise, quarantines are also recommended. These are guidelines. These are not laws. In fact, Ohio Senate Bill 22, which went into effect on June 23rd, forbids health departments from issuing quarantine or isolation orders to anyone who has not been medically diagnosed with a communicable disease. This prohibits any kind of blanket stay-at-home order over the state or a specific region. That is the law. So if masks are optional despite recommendations, why are we still mandating quarantines? Who made the decision to keep one and get rid of the other? Quarantining healthy students only hurts their mental health and their education. It also has a negative effect on the mental health of our student athletes when they have to sit at home while their team is out competing, even if they aren't sick. That is, of course, if the entire team isn't quarantined. Self-harm, suicide attempts, and prescriptions for antidepressants and anti-anxiety medications have skyrocketed amongst teens. This is a direct result of our actions, or in some cases, our inaction. Let's not go down a road we've already been down, only to end up right back where we started, or worse. My daughter was quarantined for two weeks last year. She was never sick. The irony was that the kid who tested positive in the first place was allowed back to school before her because after a few days he then tested negative. That is complete insanity. I don't blame this Board for what happened last year. I'm not angry with anyone. It was a tough position to be put in for all of us. No one could have foreseen what was going to happen. We can only learn from our mistakes now. We must focus on this present moment moving forward. If we cave to the pressure and go back down this road as a school, it is because this Board failed to stand with us, the parents, the taxpayers, and the members of this community who demand no mask mandates, no vaccine mandates, because yes, that will be next if we let it happen, and no senseless quarantines of healthy students. Anyone who votes against the righteous anger of the parents and the will of the community will be replaced at the next election. If all of us speaking here today makes you uncomfortable and doesn't embolden you to stand with the community you represent, then you need to be replaced. I ask the Board, look around you. Look at your friends, your neighbors, the people in this community. Read the room. Look at railroad days. Look at the open house we just had. Look at the first week of school. Look at all the sports practices we've had over the summer. No masks. And yet, we aren't seeing massive amounts of sickness and death like some would have us believe is happening all around us. At some point, someone has to stand up and say no, enough, and I'm doing that now. But I'm just a parent. I don't make decisions for this school. That's your job. But remember, you were elected to represent us, the parents of the students of this school. You work for us. This school system is foundational to this community. Ask yourself, do you want it to be ran into the ground on your watch? Because that is what's going to happen if we just fall in line. Listen to the voice of the parents and the community members. Talk to them. Ask them what they think. I know that you know most people in this village do not want vaccine or mask mandates, and likely even some of you Board members do not want them either. But you're waiting for support from the community. Well, here it is. It's clear that the overwhelming majority do not want to be forced and coerced into this. I'm lucky enough to be in a position where I have a choice. If this school board brings back mask mandates, I will be pulling my kids from this school system, and I suspect that there will be others who do the same. Unfortunately for most parents, that is not an option, because they have work schedules that won't allow them. Pulling my kids from this school is a decision that I and many others do not want to have to make. But I will not allow my kids to be abused and trained to be slaves at the behest of corrupt, fear-mongering politicians, big pharmaceutical companies, corporations, and media outlets vying for power. I ask you, stand with me. Stand with us. Stand with this community. It's a special place. Let's keep it that way. Standing up and speaking out is hard, especially when you feel alone and intimidated. I'm nervous right now just speaking before this Board and everyone here. And most people avoid confrontation. It makes them uncomfortable. It makes me uncomfortable. But enough is enough. Putting your job, your relationships, your finances, your reputation, even your family, and if need be, even your life on the line to stand up, speak out, and take action for what you believe can be dangerous. But it is necessary. It has to be done. History proves this. Just look at Australia right now. What are you willing to sacrifice for freedom, for justice, to do what you know in your heart is right, to follow your gut, to keep a clear conscience? Do the right thing. Keep masks and vaccines optional. Don't quarantine healthy students. Provide exemption forms or whatever it is you need to do, so long as you don't cave to the political pressure and criticism of those who push their fears onto the rest of us. Stand up and say no more. You will have the full force of this community behind you if you do. I leave you with this quote from Mark Twain, one of my favorite quotes of all time. "In the beginning of a change, the patriot is a scarce man, and brave, and hated and scorned. When his cause succeeds, the timid join him; for then it costs nothing to be a patriot." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer.
Jane Farney, 8650 Winsong Court, Franklin Township. I'm going to be short. As I mentioned last month, I have three granddaughters enrolled in Carlisle Schools. I want to speak about masks. As I mentioned last month, that masks do little to protect anyone, according to Megan Manzel. She's an ADA, OSHA, and PPE specialist. So I ask that the school board to stay strong and keep the masks as an option for the rest of the school year regardless of what the state or county mandates that come. Please leave that decision up to the parents and grandparents to decide if they want their child or grandchild to wear a mask. I also want to thank the school board and applaud you for making the motion last month to keep critical race theory out of Carlisle Schools. I brought a book, I brought a book for everyone and also for Dr. Vale. It is called Black Eye for America, and it exposes the true nature of CRT. It explains how this ideology threatens traditional American values and legal doctrines, and offers concrete solutions for taking back the country's stolen institutions. So I will end with wanting all of you to know that I am still praying for you and your families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both. I didn't have a chance to thank you, Mr. Singer. Do we have other speakers or visitors tonight?
My address is 7489 Timber Wild Way, Carlisle. Good evening. My name is Lauren, and my son attends first grade here. As a parent, I believe we are our children's biggest advocates, which is why I've chosen to speak tonight. I've heard a lot of talk about mask policies changing and watching other surrounding schools go back to mandatory masks. I am not sure if this district will be following suit or remaining optional. Regardless, I wanted to voice my concerns on the topic. Masks have been proven time and time again to do more harm than good. Children, especially children in elementary school, need to see facial expressions of their teachers and peers. It is crucial for their development. Masks also suppress children's natural, God-given immune systems. Children need to come into contact with germs. As of August 12th, 2021, the amount of COVID cases reported were 4,413,547. In the United States, out of that total, children represent only 14%. The mortality rate of children in all reporting states is 0.0 to 0.03%. More children will die from the flu and RSV than COVID-19. Masks are a false sense of security that we use to make ourselves feel better. With all this said, parents should have the right to choose what is best for their own children. I hope that you take parents' concerns into consideration with this decision moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Susan Savarda, and it's 140 Wolf Creek Court, Carlisle. So, I have notes, but I'm just going to try and talk from my heart. Like Mr. Singer said, like, I'm here to stand up for my children. I don't want to ever look back and say I didn't do anything. I think, you guys, that there are mask optional rules right now. That's not really so much my issue. My issue is the quarantines. I just keep thinking, like, how can the school keep my healthy child from attending? So, I see a couple different problems. I see the hypocrisy, and I kind of see some legality. So I've been trying to do my research, and I'm just a working mom trying to stand up for them, and I could, you know, be wrong, but you guys have access to legal counsel, and so I would hope you would use it. I just really feel like we're saying, okay, masks are optional, but you're going to be punished. You're going to be quarantined. Kids that are vaccinated don't have to quarantine. Wear a mask. You won't have to quarantine. It's really undermining that freedom. It's coercive. It's manipulative. It's bullying them. There isn't freedom. You're going to be punished if you don't wear a mask. My healthy child is going to get quarantined. I just had a friend, and her kid goes to Bell Brook and just got healthy, got quarantined already today. So it's going to start any minute now. So, looking at the quarantine guidelines, I don't know if everybody saw these, but in example two, it takes two masks not to quarantine. The sick person has a mask, and another person has a mask. That person doesn't have to quarantine. The sick person obviously is isolating. Common sense. All right. Then in example three, the sick person doesn't have a mask, but the kid next to them has a mask, doesn't quarantine. It only takes one mask in that example. So example two, we need two masks. In example three, we just need one mask. It doesn't make sense. So, I just, I see some hypocrisy there. Let me check my notes here. The hypocrisy we're seeing too is vaccinated people can spread the disease. Okay? So, I still, it doesn't make sense that they wouldn't have to quarantine too. I don't want them to, but it's just, it doesn't make any sense. And then if we're going to say, oh, well, it's for public welfare, that is not taking into account their mental health. Last year, my kids were both quarantined at some point, and I had a seventh grader sitting there like, Mom, I don't understand my math. And I'm like, how can you? No one taught you. He's like in tears practically, but he had to go back to school and take the test like everyone else and not, you know, have been taught that. I have a junior who's taking four honors classes in a CCP class. Ten days of school is going to wear on his mental health, let alone what it's going to do to his grades and college and, you know, it's just snowballs. So, I don't buy that it's for the public welfare if we're not going to take into account their mental health. We're going to quarantine them from sports. We know that exercise is good for them. It keeps them healthy. I just don't understand why would we quarantine healthy kids? And they said some statistics, you know, there's only been 335 deaths of children under 18 in the first 18 months of COVID. They have like a 99.9% survival rate. I don't think we should be taking the kids out of school that are healthy. The other thing, like, could we show an antibody test? No, we're in here because it say I could, you know, I don't want to get my kids tested because then we'll end up with a false positive. But, you know, how about an antibody test? I did, it just, it just feels like if you're not following the political narrative, you're going to be punished. All right, wrapping up, I did some research too. The 14th Amendment, that was like, you know, they did a lot, like, separate but equal, but during, they ended up deciding that public education was a right. It's guaranteed by the 14th Amendment. And it does prohibit any state from making certain laws applicable only to persons of a certain class level. One class cannot receive preferential treatment over another class. All individuals are being treated as, should be treated as equals. I don't see that happening with these quarantine rules. The vaccinated are getting special treatment, the masks are getting special treatment. I don't know how that works. And then as someone else mentioned, Senate Bill that was passed in, 22, that was passed in June, it amended the revised code 3707.11, that they can only be in quarantine if they come in direct contact with someone who is diagnosed with COVID. All of our guidelines say close contact. So I just don't know legally what's the difference? Like, six feet away just doesn't seem like direct contact with me, for me. So, I just, I would ask that you guys would look into it. If these are just guidelines, I say we trash them. I say we keep our kids in school. Obviously, if my kid is sick, we're all going to keep them home. The 24-hour fever-free makes sense. It's worked for how many years? So, I just wish that, I just, my desire is that you guys would look into that, that you would fight for our kids, that they would be healthy and stay in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other visitors' comments tonight? We have four minutes.
My name is Brad Wilforce. Three of my children go to Carlisle, and I have the same concerns as everyone else. I mean, I didn't even want to send them back this year. Frankly, I don't trust you guys with my children. Making, forcing them to wear masks, I mean, they have a better chance of being struck by lightning or a falling rock. It's ridiculous. I'm really disappointed in the management of COVID. My son was quarantined four times last year. How am I supposed to hold him accountable for his grades if he can't go to school? You know, my kids are unengaged. They're learning math that doesn't make any sense. Their common core curriculum is absurd, and I'm just really unhappy with every one of you. You know, we give you our most prized possessions every day, and this is how you treat them. Thanks.
We do have time for one more visitor's comment if anyone else would like to speak. Thank you all for speaking tonight. At this time, we will move on to our regular business meeting with Mr. Bassler's Treasury Report.
Thank you, Mrs. McIntosh. Short financial report this month for me, but first I have non-action items. First, we do have the Capitol Conference that's coming up, so I will be getting in touch with all of you in the next day or two to see about the Capitol Conference that is back in person in Columbus this year, after being virtual last year. So we'll get together and see who might be interested in attending. I just wanted to make sure that you get that on your calendar. Second is the Southwest Regional File Conference. That date is set for October the 14th. The site has not been published yet. They're still working on a site, but that also is going to be in person. And again, I will be asking if you will be interested in attending. Just wanted to make sure that these dates in October, November were on your calendar as we move forward. So with that, I have my action items for the month. I need approval for the minutes from the last regularly scheduled Board meeting, which was July 26.
Thank you. Mrs. Lainhart, she beat me to it. She, so moved the motion, so do I have a second?
Second.
Which one was it? All three of you?
Milligan.
Okay. Thank you. If we don't have any discussion, can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Bassler?
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
And Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Secondly, is the financial report, which is part of your packet. That is for a month in, July, which is just one month into our year. Not a whole lot of activity, a lot of activity on the order side, but not a whole lot of activity on the payment side yet until all those orders come in and we make payments. So it's very busy right now. You'll see most of those expenses hit in the August financial report, which is for the September meeting. Other than that, not a whole lot of change as far as the budget is concerned. Just getting started. So I just need approval for the financial report.
Can I get a motion to approve the financial report? First by Mr. Jewell. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Milligan. If there's not any discussion, can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Bassler?
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan? Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And then lastly, on my, a brand-new regulation by the Ohio Auditor of State. We have to approve the district's income earned from commercial paper and bankers' acceptances, which in the past, we've not had any of those until we had the money for the building here that was invested during that time. So we did earn some money last year that we had invested in commercial paper. Again, I don't want to lecture about how the whole investing process is, but you can only invest in very low-risk items when you're dealing with public money. And we use a public company to do that. I don't do that myself. So we did earn some income from commercial paper and bankers' acceptances last year, so I just need approval that that was part of the packet and the board is aware of that.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Mrs. Miller? Can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Milligan, correction. Second by Mr. Jewell. Can I get a roll call if there's not any discussion, please?
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Thank you. That is my financial report for the month.
Thank you, Mr. Bassler. Dr. Vale, can we have your superintendent's report, please?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I have non-action items. Building update. They are continuing to go through the building and knock off some odds and ends here. We were able to get all the TVs in place and get the ones up and running. We'll have them in the commons area and in the classrooms, conference areas, those type of things. Now, our job is to find all the remote controls that go to those TVs and see if we can get those working. HVAC system, we've got to the bottom of that problem. Last week was nice with the cooler weather. We've actually had some teachers and students ask if we could turn the air conditioning off for a little bit, but we had a little snappy this morning, but it got up and running, and we're, as you can tell, very, very temperate in here today. Visitors' bleachers are up. We have our final inspection for that tomorrow, and we should be ready to go with those. The other thing you'll notice is we do have the marquee out front, and we're going to be getting that finished off this week and get that up and running, be able to put messages out there to let everyone know what's going on with that. And so as we get ready to get to the end of our being in here one year, we came in occupied September 8th is one of our first day last year, so we're getting those things checked off the list. Back-to-school update, we are starting our second week. Knock on wood, it's gone very smoothly, very few hiccups here and there, getting everyone settled in. We did have Meet the Teacher Night on A-12, as a lot of people alluded to. It was a great crowd. We will be looking at assessing that procedure and process to see if we can streamline that somehow and maybe vary a couple nights so it's not quite an attack on our parking lot and our staff as well. And just FYI, we'll get this publicized a little bit better, is that on Monday, August 30th, we're going to have a community open house where people from the community can come roam through the building. That will be from 5:00 to 6:30. Again, on Monday, August 30th, we're going to have a community open house from 5:00 to 6:30. So we'll make sure that that gets publicized and get the community a chance to come in and see this wonderful showcase that they have afforded us to educate the students in. So that's all of my non-action items. Thank you. Action items, first thing is item one, B1, general district business. Approved resolution declaring transportation being impractical, attachment D. What that means is we've got students that live outside the range and/or we do not have the time to drive over the bus to transport, so we do in lieu of payment for those families, and that is attachment D. If we get that approved, I appreciate that.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
First by Mrs. Milligan. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's not any discussion, can I get roll call, please, Mr. Bassler?
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Item two, certified resignation, approved resignation of Elizabeth Middleton as fifth-grade teacher effective August 4th, 2021.
Can I get a motion to approve? First by Mrs. Lainhart. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Milligan. If there's no discussion, I'd like to have a roll call, please, Mr. Bassler.
Mrs. Lain, or, sorry, yeah, Mrs. Lainhart. Sorry.
Okay.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
I talked over top of it. I'm sorry. I was so excited. Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Item three, certified employment. Approved Brooke Adams as fifth-grade teacher, retroactive August 12th, 2021, and she came in to replace Elizabeth Middleton.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve? First by Mrs. Lainhart. Can I get a second? By Mr. Jewell? If there's not any discussion, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Thank you. Item four, classified employment. Asked that you approve Tim Young as a classified substitute bus driver.
Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
First by Mrs. Milligan. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lainhart. If there's not any discussion, can we get the roll call, please, Mr. Bassler?
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Thank you. And last item is supplemental employment. Have a handful of those. First of all, to approve Xavier McKinney as assistant number-two summer band. B, approve Jason Combs as flag corps drill team advisor. Item C, approve Katie Schultz as the mentor teacher A for Melissa Fisher. Item D, approve John Giles as a mentor teacher A for Brooke Adams. And item E, approve Julie Jackson as the PVIS coordinator for seventh and eighth grade.
Can I get a motion to approve the supplementals?
So moved.
First by Mrs. Milligan. Second, Mr. Jewell. Second by Mr. Jewell. If there's no discussion, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all the action items that I have for tonight.
Our next item is Board of Education reports. The legislative report, they have just now came back into session from their summer recess, so I look to have news coming in any time now, definitely by the next board meeting. Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes, the CTC met on August 17th. It was a special meeting at 6:00 PM, and we hired a new treasurer.
Do we have any old business? Any new business?